From August of 17. I'm sure you remember what happened there, Dave. Pretty easy. You can skim reading it, I don't know a lot about it. That motion approved, yes they are. Your move for a second? Second, I'm gonna do the second on paper. I file them. You wanna introduce us on Kevin?
Yeah, so you have an example of a letter in front of you from Campbell County. Essentially, what the issue is before us is should we consider the combination of entire lots without planning commission review? So, we had actually, in the past, I think we have always done this, required a survey, required to come forth with planning commission. And partially, I think that may have been because we used to do our own assessing, we had our own flats, we had everything here. We've had a couple folks approach us recently, and you know, if you think about the cost associated with a survey, that's actually, can be rather expensive. And we reached out, actually Campbell County got, talked to Campbell County, and they actually approved these, I was talking to Tim just now, and he was saying that Highland Heights actually does the same thing, without planning commission, a formal approval, if it is a full deeded lot, if it has a lot description, just like we normally require, and it is a full lot. Obviously, if they have to change deed restriction, deed, I'm sorry, the lot description, and they have to subdivide that in some way, it has to come before us, but if it is a full lot, they're requesting that it not come before this board. Obviously, the two criteria as listed in here, or a couple criteria, you obviously can't combine two lots with a house on, to create one lot, you're only allowed to have one, one home lot. But, if you have two vacant lots, or one vacant lot and one house on another lot, Campbell County doesn't see an issue, Highland Heights doesn't see an issue to combine those, since you have all the information you need, you have the legal description, you have this in place, and you have a formal deed, to combine those without our review. And obviously, I wanted to get your blessing before we considered this, get your input, see if you had any concerns. Obviously, I do want to double check our subdivision regulations and make sure we're not in conflict with that in some way, but wanted to put that out for you to discuss.
Right, and so my question is, will we have to modify the sub regs because of this change in procedure?
Yeah, and I, yeah, I wanna dig in and make sure that we're not in conflict with what our current regulations are, which I didn't do at this point. I kinda wanted to make sure that this is something that you didn't have a problem with, and what, if it was not in conflict with our regulations, and then, we would create a similar letter as this. Speaking of Tim, I don't wanna, excuse your counter, Tim, but Tim did some lab work, and was saying that it still need to be signed off by our chairman?
Right.
You know, so...
And that's primarily because Jim Larson's office requires that, and so, that's the primary reason they still require, it always has to be reviewed, even if it was done by staff, and it's not being approved, it still has to be reported to the planning commission, and then signed off on by the chairman.
And so, obviously, from administrative standpoint, I would look at those things that, we're not combining two homes, that one is a home and a vacant lot, or two vacant lots, that were...
And I know it's unlikely, but I assume that this also applies in a situation, it wouldn't apply in a situation where you have, where a two adjacent parts of straddle of zoning districts, so one in one zoning district, one in another.
I mean, that's definitely something to...
I think I would restrict it so that they would be in the same zoning district. Cause then you're, you know, huddling for the zoning district boards.
No, I think that's a great point, that I, you know, I'm not sure that this letter addresses...
It doesn't say that in the letters.
But it's definitely something that we need to consider, obviously, you're, you don't have that line there, formal, formal line there anymore, so, maybe that's a question for the planners in the other, in Campbell County, Highland Heights, to see how they deal with something like that.
I would've made it up often.
Yeah, you know, I don't know, it certainly could.
Do you remember us having any readings?
Yes.
I'd say we have, honestly, I don't wanna say with any certainty.
I think there has been over the years.
But there probably has been, that we've required a survey, just, you know, someone obtaining a lot from somebody else that, it, I didn't go back in our records and check, but I would say that it has happened.
I think we just don't wanna mess with a situation where you have half of a parcel in one district and half of a parcel in another.
I can't think of any time in the last, these 20 years where we haven't approved this pretty, like, within minutes, except, with the exception of, maybe there was an error with the survey or whatever, but though, my only concern, if you don't have a fresh survey, that kind of combines everything, that makes it really easy to transfer it the next time, then you've got two separate, I guess, drawings on file at the county, right?
Right.
And does that, and there's, there's different lengths of time between those drawings were done, and there are different quality and details included in one, and should we care about that? I mean, should somebody look at it and say, hey, if you're gonna combine these now, maybe we should clean this up, or something, so, but...
Well, I mean, that's obviously what we've done in the past, and I, you know, I see your point, obviously, from our perspective, I think that it does clean things up, and it makes it easy for the next guy, you know, if he's purchasing the property, or if there's, you know, some conflict of some sort, it certainly does, and I, that probably, you know, is one of those contributing factors as to why we've done it, you know, in the past. But, but once again, it, I think it's...
Definitely adds a bunch of time, and somebody's trying to complete a sale, and we don't have a quorum, so then we get to push back, and they're waiting two months, and they gotta spend a bunch of money for a survey, and we're gonna approve it very quickly, you know, and it's just an administrative thing like this, I can understand why.
How does it work when you're trying to determine setbacks, you know, from how a survey, you know, exact survey, like, somebody wants to buy lots and build something, and you don't, you don't have anything on record showing a survey of how far back they can build, or how side to side they can build, depending on what they like? How do you determine that they're within the zoning survey?
I mean, I, that's a good question, if there's not a new survey, it's an old lot that maybe doesn't have a very detailed, um, legal description, or it'll have a detailed legal description, but maybe not a detailed flat associated with it. You know, obviously, we do use, in some instances, we'll use LinkGIS, and give us an idea of what's going on, but it won't give us a precise dimension unless they have it surveyed, so...
Kevin, is, if I may interrupt, is this not what you and I were talking about yesterday? The combining lots is to have essentially one tax bill on a larger lot?
Right.
So if you're building a second home, you would have to provide that lot again anyway, is that not correct?
If we could, and every, I want everybody's conversation, but if we could have these guys talk it out, and then we'll open it up to conversation, okay?
I mean, I think, you know, like most, like you said, in this situation, like, if you have either existing structure on one lot, you would have two existing structures, or you don't have any existing structures.
Right.
Even if it's a brand new vacant lot, you're better to get a structure, than you could just look at the border, the combined border, and tell what they want.
Yeah, and that's just it, I don't know, if you have an old lot that may not have a good survey, it may conflict, if they're looking to get closer to a property line, or close to a property line, it may create a little bit of...
I mean, maybe that's something, when you look at the subdivision regs, if you could add a section in there, if there's any ambiguity where the zoning miniature might determine the setback, it may require a, you know, land survey of the, by parcel before, before a structure would be approved or building, or something like that.
I mean, a lot of them would prove that wasn't for additional building, or putting houses up.
You're right, in most instances, it's kind of cleaning up property lines, it's, it's, you know, someone that doesn't want something built next to them, versus somebody that wants something built next to them, so they want that extra property to create a buffer, so you're right, it's generally not an issue. And certainly, you know, to Jenny's point, you know, we're not going to have two structures, or no, two, two structures won't be allowed to be built on the same property, so that wouldn't be adequate, more if, if there was an addition of property, and somebody was, if there was an existing house, and they wanted to put addition on, is that addition compliant with zoning? Or, if there was no house, is this now still compliant with setbacks? If we don't have a really good detailed survey, so...
So, you can request a survey, we don't have...
Well, you know, honestly, that's certainly something that...
If they're building on it, like I said, most of the ones, they're not building on, but if they are building on the property, you could say, hey, we need a survey to...
I think that's part of this discussion, I think that's a good, great point, that if there is any ambiguity that we, you know, if we need, if we get into this and we need to modify our language, even, you know, I'll dig into what we've got, and see if, see if it's something that we feel we need to modify the language to achieve this, and then, you know, I don't know if we can do that, I guess, create a policy that lists these things that are on here, but also adds that, if it could be in policy form versus an actual regulation form, you know, we could possibly do that, and certainly, that's something I wanna check with, you know, Tim and maybe some of the other counties, to see if that's an option, just to do it policy form versus in, versus actual regulation, you know, for something like that.
I struggle with just the one or two of them that we've never paid, or changed the thing.
Well, I've got two of them out there.
I think it's after one, you, you know, to drive down the new cleaner flats that it takes out, or whatever, and all this thing, for a system, it's already working like it is.
Well, I mean, I've got two of them that are requesting this discussion, I've got two of them hanging out there that, they're like, well, I'd rather not pay for a survey, the survey cost and the time and everything associated with it, it's kind of what prompted this conversation.
With the time, how do we, how do we, can we address the survey part of this, the biggest cost, how can we allow that not be a survey, maybe?
Well, I guess that's kind of the point, if we didn't acquire a survey, then we wouldn't need to really have this, there's nothing to review, if we didn't have a survey, there really wouldn't be a, other than administratively making sure there's not two houses, or something like that, you're not, I mean, you're not overly critiquing anything, cause it's already there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with a policy, but I guess, the one, like you were saying, have you required, would require, they had actually signed off, I think if you did that in between two planning, basically, it would be an agenda of the planning commission, you could just say, during the past, whatever periods that we last met, and the city is following consolidations for your creation, just as a reporting exercise, and then at that point, it's a date to sign on. If there's any questions, then we can ask them, I mean, generally, it's not, it's just a reporting thing, we're not, we're not reviewing it.
But do you think that we, is there any chance that we open ourselves up to liability? And say, for example, I buy something from my neighbor, I don't realize that there, that the other neighbor's gotta shed half on their property, now I acquire a property with a title problem, you know, because the guy shed, the next lot over is on my property, so, we approve it without a boundary survey, or we have to survey, and they get in an argument at some point, saying, hey, you gotta move shed off of my property, like, well, it's, but you know, I'm just...
I don't think we take on any actual liability, I mean, it's a continued remainder of the property, but you know, at some point, it's incumbent upon me, if you think that there's any question at all, go to your defenses. Again, this is, I hear both sides of the story, I hear both sides of the argument, hey, it's been working really well for a lot of years, but also, we're trying to do something that will allow citizens maybe not spend as much, and to get it done quicker, so, but from liability standpoint, I can tell, I don't think it's, that remains to be determined.
So if I'm acquiring a lot from you, and I choose not to have a survey done, then I assume, I assume the risk, because I didn't spend the money here.
You can always come back and have your survey done, if you're...
Just hoping we don't wait like 70 years, the adverse possession kicks in.
So when somebody comes with building permits to build out a structure, you require, they have to place that on the lot?
Right.
And so, and is that official, or do they just, is it kind of just a sketch, like a, cause I know building permits, a lot of times, you can just kind of draw it out, like, you know?
It can be a sketch, but if there's any question whatsoever, I dive in a little bit, you know, if, okay, they show me this, and I go look at GIS, and I can't wait a minute, you need to prove to me that what you're doing here, and, you know, we usually get there, we have requirements, even, you know, involve a board adjustment if there's question, or a board adjustment, we just got a case last month, that, like, yeah, we're not buying it, you need to do a, you need, you need to do a survey, cause there's so, there's so much in question, if you wanna move forward with this, you need to do a survey, so, if it does get to that much of a question, then we have time to cover, to get surveyed, or prove to us that you're...
If you're comfortable, it's, you know, if you go through this, take it, comp, okay, they're gonna have to need a survey, they do it, or if they're, if they're, if they're violating the regulation, try to make it happen.
You could put language in there that really almost be, have this discussion, right?
Which I mean, I don't wanna put him on a hook, if they're beating up that, tell them that they don't think that's right, or does he say, okay, because it's this, we're gonna take it back to the board, and look at it, collectively, we'd say, either, either...
I mean, it would make it a lot cleaner for me, a lot easier, if there was some solid line, you said...
If you give you an option to send it back to us, if you think it's...
And we, we usually work our way through, you know, we, we talk with homeowners, and you know, we reference, we can reference all permits, we, you know, there's options and things that we do to get where we need to get, and if there's a question, a lot of times, what I, what we end up doing is air on the side caution, okay, if you're not 100% certain, let's take this thing over, a shed, if you're, if you're just asking for it too close, you just don't know, well, let's be certain of it, let's take it over, and usually, it works out, and if it doesn't, then obviously, like I said, it'll sometimes involve board adjustment, and, and one survey.
I think that, for sure, we don't have to have it brought to the planning commission, just a matter of whether, when I...
Well, I'd say, unless, unless he feels uncomfortable, we get a really messy situation, we wanna give him the option of bringing it back.
So are we talking about the option of bringing it to the city, to the planning commission, which is requiring a survey?
We are. Say that again?
No, I thought, I thought we were just talking about, is that you felt there was too much ambiguity between, you know, what's being presented, you could require a new survey to approve the boundaries, but that didn't necessarily mean to get it, bring it to...
No, I mean, I think that's changing language, I think if we get to that point, you know, where we might have to change language and go through modifying sub regulations, I think very generically...
But just to give you the authority to require a certain...
Right, and if we could, you know, very generically, though, the question is, are you okay with combining lots without our review, without planning permission per, um, generic, you know, if we wanna add meat to that, then that's kind of another discussion. Yeah, it's kind of, are we okay with this in its purest form of just, hey, let's combine two lots, if it meets our regulations, combine two lots, and review it administratively? You know, if we start adding some of these elements that we're talking about, you know, that's changing language, so that's, that's kind of changing, changing. Or we could, we could be okay with this for now, and then, we're actually modifying languages to go, you know, and I think part of the zoning protocol, we were gonna be talking about, is modifying the subdivision regulations, but we could, we could then, take care of it as we get to the process, but...
Well, I guess, it kind of is definitely a conflict, like, if there isn't any conflict, then I think we can amend it, essentially, but if there is a conflict, then I think you wanna get your someone out.
Well, I think, you know, my initial reaction is that there is, you know, I don't think Campbell County or Highland Heights is doing anything improper by allowing this, so, it makes me feel better that there's other local jurisdictions that are allowing this, and I'm not that particularly worried about it, if we cover our bases with this contact here. Now, once again, if we wanna add some meat to it as we modify our sub regs, I think that we can certainly do that in a relatively short period of time, as we're up in, we're going to...
Mr. Chairman, at some point, I did interrupt, Joe, and whenever you feel that it's ready to come down the station.
I guess I actually have one more question, so, like in the Campbell County case, they indicated that part of my name number was gonna be retired, would they wish, who makes that determination?
Usually, that's them, and so that is one...
So you'll need to notify them when they're...
Absolutely, and they'll need to choose, you know, one of the two, or that they assign that number, so that is something that, um, when you approve it, I think that should be...
Somebody needs to identify that.
Absolutely, absolutely. In that extent, I don't know, I assign addresses.
Well, I might could say, think, maybe I have to stick it to the hand, or to the pen, you know?
Well, and usually, a vacant lot doesn't have an address, that's nine times out of 10, but every once in a while, it certainly could be...
It's got a pronoun, it's...
We answered your question, maybe?
Actually, I thought I answered yours, because I, but, I have a couple, I couldn't hear what some people were saying, my understanding is, a single lot, I mean, a house, a lot with a home, and a vacant lot, combining them, essentially, so they get one tax bill, that was...
Clean it up, you know, and pretty much, that's one of the reasons, maybe there's others out there, but that's probably the primary reason, just to clean it, clean up the lots.
Okay, so my question is, the same person has to own both of those lots anyway, correct?
Absolutely.
So, when this person buys an empty lot, I assume that that has been surveyed, it probably has had title search and everything else, when I bought the same lot?
It's got a legal description, now, if it's an old lot of record, it may or may not have a, a recent survey, but most of the things here in Fort Thomas do have something with them, because of, because of the nature of Fort Thomas, now, if you go out of county, it might be a little bit different, you know, it might not have that formal survey, but most of the situations we have here, I, there is a survey of reference.
I would think so, I mean, if not, I can't imagine doing this without a survey, because there's a home, there's a home, and a lot in the middle, if I were this guy, I'd kind of just have it surveyed before, you know, it would seem to me, but again, if they own both lots, I would think both lots have already been surveyed at some time, or title searched, so, so I'm assuming you're talking about one person owning a home and an empty lot?
Or two empty lots.
Or two empty lots, but one property owned?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's me, shed a little bit of this, right on it, someone asked me this question, that could a person, so you've got two homes, two lots, could I buy my next door neighbor's property, and tear it down, and then combine the property to have one large lot?
Sure. Now, now, that would have to be done before, before there's a combination of lots.
I can't...
Before you combine the lots, you would have to tear it up?
Oh, absolutely.
Well, you could...
No.
Yeah, absolutely, and then, obviously, at that point, it would be restricted that they couldn't build a new house.
What if they tore down? Because it became one lot?
Because it became...
Okay, but I could extend my home, you know, if you need so much on each side, I could extend it to that, okay? The one thing I, this is, I guess what I would say, a personal thing, I had lived in my home for, I don't know, 35, 40 years at the time, the next door neighbor, while I was incapacitated, couldn't go, couldn't get out of a chair for a couple months, anyway, he put a shed, it was very, definitely was very close to my lot, I knew that he was too close, he couldn't put it, and, so, I called, and I said, I just learned that this shed got put out, I think it's too close, and so, someone from the city, I know who it was, cause I saw him, so, he went, knocked on the guy's door, he said, did you get a building permit, he said, no, he said, was too close, and he goes, well, I don't think I should have to take it down, and so, the city guy called me and said, yeah, that'd be kind of mean to make you take it down, so this became, fell on me, to pay $600 to have my lot surveyed, and it, and either I was gonna have to fight my neighbor, it's still there, I've moved, it's still there, so, as far as...
I mean, that's not, that's not how I would handle that situation.
The man said, well, I didn't get a permit, and, you know, it's already up.
Well, we have regulations that said permits are required, so I would say, that person would have to get a permit, and have to prove that where exactly, so I, I think...
Well, they didn't make it, I'm not just telling.
Yeah, and that's not the way I...
It was, I'd say it was six years ago, cause I remember when my leg was broken. So, that was a, when you say, well, it probably wouldn't happen, and I'm not one who fights with my neighbors, and consequently, it cost me money, and I guess...
Jim, I'm asking, and I'm having trouble hearing you as well, if you call the city and let them know it's being built, because sometimes, you know, the city's not gonna realize that a shed's being built, if you let them know...
It was up, I, I was not allowed out of my chair for 10 weeks.
Gotcha.
I was put in the living room.
It usually statute...
I was locked down for 10 weeks, and it was during that time.
It usually statute...
It was up before...
If we can, and we've got, I tell you, we've got LinkGIS, you know, it's pretty nice from the perspective of looking back and seeing if there was a structure there, so there's, I think there's a KRS statute that talks about the 10-year, if it's been there for 10 years, and it's something of that nature, then there is some latitude that limits what a local jurisdiction can do, but, um, under those circumstances, that's, that's not common practice that I would, you know...
Okay, another, another incident I found, I just sort of uncovered this today, and it fits, I, as much as I use LinkGIS, and I'm very familiar with it, I've never been through the deed books, which I went, I spent three hours down there today, looking through deeds, looking for deed requirements, or deed area, yeah, things, and I stumbled upon, and I wasn't looking here, but suddenly, what made me a little bit curious, is it's a little street called Atlas and Court, which is also off of Southview, and there's, from what I can see on LinkGIS, just three homes, and on the PVA site, both, just three homes, number four, number eight, and number 12, only thing that struck me odd is number four, in 2003, sold for $65,500, number eight, in 2020, sold for $79,900, and number 12, sold in 2002 for $58,000, and in 2011 for $18,000, now, that just seems, I, I've not heard of anybody going $40,000 down on a $60,000 house in our lifetime, in less than 10 years, and I thought, is this a situation where, and by the way, the owner of number four and number 12 is the same person?
Well, if they're not butting each other, then they, they couldn't combine...
Unless they got the middle one, no, no, I understand that, but it just, for some reason, you know, my antenna went up, it's like...
I'm sure there's a lot of nuances like that, if a house, I don't know, burned down, or is, was in disrepair, and, you know, I don't know, but, I don't wanna say what happened there.
No, I don't, I don't, it's back in the chest.
Well, if it's not related to what we're...
Some of the property.
If they buy the middle house, it's pretty much...
I, I, but, if it's not, I mean, it's something you can always bring up with the city, and Gavin, and all this, but for these guys, and their, their meeting, any other conversation about what we're talking about tonight?
I wanna make sure I understand this, can you hear me?
I can.
All right, so somebody could buy three lots, or five, or six, demolish all the buildings, and then ask you all to combine them without review? How far does this go?